Recording in progress.
I do, right here on the side, we are hiding a little thing to present to them.
Oh, okay.
The collage.
Oh.
Yeah, she didn't give it to me, so I just. We'll call her. Okay.
Everybody ready? Good evening. We will call the Auburn City Council meeting for Monday, May 19th, 2025 to order. We will begin with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the federally recognized Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the ancestral keeper of the land we are gathered on today. We thank them for their immense contributions to our state and local history, culture, economy, and identity as Washingtonians. Today's meeting will be held both in person and virtually. If you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated, and Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Ammer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused. Right. We are going to have a couple of proclamations this evening, so I'm going to go over to the podium. And the first one today, I am going to ask Pat Bailey to come up and assist, and she'll call some other people up for introductions, I believe. Hello, Pat. Would you like to let us know who else you'd like to have come up here today?
Okay, I would.
Yep, just.
I would like to introduce three very important people today, very important to us. I'd like you to meet first Brandon Muller. Brandon is the manager of one of the biggest regions in the state of Washington for the State Department of Natural Resources. Brandon, next I'd like to introduce Wilson Jimna. Wilson is the president of the Marshallese community from Seattle all the way to Tumwater, and he's been working with us for many, many years. And then I'd like to introduce Eric Parker. Eric is a chemist for Warehouser and has been a volunteer with our group for several years, and I think he's really part Marshallese because he's been working with the Marshallese community for quite some time, and he also speaks Marshallese. So I know, we're very, very happy to have him, and these people have done so much for the project that you're going to hear about. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And let's not forget Pat Bailey in all of this, and her work in our community and the connections that she is able to make. I mean, what a wonderful testimony to the work that Pat has done since 2015, right? 2015. She retired in 2014. I gave her six months, and then I made her come back to work, and she-
She said, "I've got a very nice, fun adventure for you."
And it has been a fun adventure, hasn't it? Yes. Community health is something that has been critical to us ever since a King County health assessment came out in 2015, 2014, that showed that South King County has lower life expectancy, higher rates of disease, and so many other things that we don't deserve, more so than North King County, and so-
And you know what she said to me? She said, "Not on my watch."
And she has been doing that ever since. Pat is tireless in her efforts, and when she believes in something, she just sticks with it. And so this tonight is in thanks of one of those projects. I will put my glasses back on, and I will read the mayor's proclamation. Mayor's proclamation: Whereas this proclamation is to commend the Washington State Department of Natural Resources, DNR, and their employee, Brandon Muller, for his phenomenal work to help the teenagers of the Auburn Marshallese community. And whereas the Washington Marshallese Community Association and Auburn's Blue Ribbon Committee, Healthy Auburn for Life, have been working on a canoe carving project to help teens who are looking for a sense of belonging other than in gangs. A positive learning experience that promotes friendship, teamwork, and mutual respect, while learning canoe carving skills of their ancestors and life skills in their new country when creating a 24-foot-long, traditional Marshallese sail canoe. And whereas the WCMA and the BRC had been searching for suitable logs four feet in diameter for many months without success until the call was made to the DNR. And whereas the call was answered by Brandon Muller, and he listened to the needs and issues of finding logs for this canoe carving project, and said he would check log size availability in his area and update as needed. And whereas Brandon, as Assistant Regional Manager of the South Puget Sound Region, five counties plus, assists in the responsibilities of 360,000 acres of forest, oversees forest practices of 2.5 million acres, preventing wildfires and fighting on 1.9 million acres of state and forest land. And whereas Brandon searched extensively for logs that would be a perfect fit for this project, he was able to locate two possible 40-foot-long logs, and with the help of a transport company, they moved them to Auburn and therefore successfully completed this work. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2025, as Brandon Muller Day in the City of Auburn, and salute Brandon Muller to show appreciation for his persistence and commitment on making the 24-foot Marshallese sail canoe a reality. Brandon?
Thank you. Yeah, it's been a great opportunity, and thanks, Pat, for reaching out. It's great to be a part of the Marshallese community and helping with that, and I'm glad I can represent the DNR and help with the city and the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I think we have something else, do we not? That we want to present, kind of heavy. This is the City of Auburn and Washington Marshallese Community Association in great appreciation to Brandon Muller, State Lands' Assistant Regional Manager, South Puget Sound Region, Washington State DNR.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work. Wilson and Eric, thank you very much as well. All right. This next mayor's proclamation is for goodwill ambassadors for the City of Auburn, and I would like to invite Chandler Gross, Miss Auburn 2025, and Malia Watanabe Collier up for this, please. Put the glasses back on. Mayor's proclamation: Whereas the Miss Auburn and Miss Auburn's Teen Scholarship Program held their competition in February of 2025. Two new delegates were crowned to represent Auburn, and the program was pleased to announce Chandler Gross as our 2025 Miss Auburn and Malia Watanabe Collier as our 2025 Miss Auburn's Teen. And whereas they both agreed to serve as goodwill ambassadors in the Auburn community and will lead by example and serve as role models and mentors under the four points of the Miss America Crown, which are service, scholarship, style, and success. They know them. And whereas they will continue to promote their community service initiatives by volunteering to speak at local schools, civic, and other organizations, making appearances at city and community events, fundraisers, and parades. And whereas the Miss Auburn and Miss Auburn's Teen Program is a stepping stone to Miss America. The goal of the organization is to develop future leaders and assist them in furthering their scholarship earnings, speaking skills, and personal development by preparing them for state and national competitions. And whereas we are very proud of Chandler and Malia and know both these amazingly smart, talented young women will represent Auburn successfully with the goals of becoming the next Miss Washington and Miss Washington's Teen. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the designation of Chandler Gross, Miss Auburn 2025, and Malia Watanabe Collier, Miss Auburn's Teen 2025, as goodwill ambassadors for the City of Auburn, and give special recognition to them for all their accomplishments and extend our best wishes in making their year of service exceptional, dated this 19th day of May, 2025. And ladies, I have one for each of you. Chandler? And I know you'd like to say a few words, so.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm so honored and excited to be here tonight. Thank you all so much for joining me for this truly special moment. First and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Nancy Backus and the incredible Auburn City Council, Councilmembers Rakes, Baldwin, Taylor Turner, Trout Manuel, Taylor, Sturgis, and Amair, for this incredible honor and for believing in me. Being named a goodwill ambassador for the City of Auburn is far more than a title. It is a profound honor and a calling I embrace with deep gratitude and purpose. Auburn is more than the place I serve. It's the community that has uplifted me, inspired me, and the place I call home. What I've learned most through this journey is the extraordinary power of community. It was the people of Auburn who reminded me that I didn't have to face my diagnosis alone. In a world that so often misunderstands schizophrenia, Auburn chose to listen, to uplift, and to believe in me, and that gave me the belief and the courage to believe in myself. Representation matters. When someone living with schizophrenia is not seen as broken but as brave, it shifts the narrative, not just for them but for everyone watching. I often think of Zelda Fitzgerald, a woman whose brilliance and complexity were overshadowed by misunderstanding. She too lived with schizophrenia, and she once wrote, "I am really only myself when I'm somebody else whom I have endowed with these wonderful qualities from my imagination." That quote really speaks to me, because the version of myself I once imagined, the girl who could speak up and show up, she lives in me now, and I know that transformation was only possible because I was surrounded by a community that made room for me to grow. As Auburn's goodwill ambassador, my mission is simple but powerful. I will continue to be a bridge between lived experience and understanding. My commitment is to mental health education, breaking stigma, and to building spaces where every person feels seen and valued. I also want to celebrate all that makes Auburn shine, from visiting classrooms to taking the Miss Washington stage. I will carry Auburn's heart with me wherever I go, and I promise to show up not just with purpose but with joy, with bold colors and bright words. In the end, this role is not just about me, it's about us. It's about the kind of community that believes in lifting people up, not leaving them out. It's about creating a city where young people can see themselves reflected in leadership, even if their path looks different. It's about choosing empathy, courage, and hope again and again. So thank you truly for this honor. Together, we're not just shattering stigma, we're building a future where every story matters, every voice is heard, and every person belongs.
Good evening, Mayor Backus, council members, and community members. My name is Malia Watanabe Collier, and I'm incredibly honored and grateful to stand before you tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this proclamation and for the opportunity to serve as a goodwill ambassador. It's truly a privilege, and I'm deeply thankful for your support and belief in young people like me. When we think of the word goodwill, we think of kindness and understanding. We can embody this word as a community through empathy. My community service initiative is called Stories That Heal: Inspiring Compassion Through Storytelling and Culture Sharing. The heart of this project is simple but powerful. When we take time to hear someone else's story, we grow in curiosity, empathy, and compassion. These are the tools we need to build a more kind and peaceful world, especially for my generation. I chose this initiative because, like many teens, I see a lot of hate, mockery, and division around me, sometimes even in my own school. Whether it's cruel comments about someone's identity, cultural or beliefs, or even the broader conflicts we see in the world, it's clear that we need to do better. I believe empathy isn't just a nice idea. It's the first step towards real peace, and storytelling is how we get there. As a hula dancer, I've learned that storytelling can be a bridge between cultures. Hula has taught me how traditions carry meaning and how important it is to really see and understand each other. I've shared this through multicultural nights across local districts, and I'm excited to continue this work in the Auburn School District through classroom visits that encourage students to embrace curiosity and celebrate our differences. I'm also bringing these stories to life online through social media, where so many of my peers spend their time. Using short-form video platforms in my titleholder account, I've been able to highlight stories that need to be told, like a friend with type 1 diabetes, a sponsor of an Afghan refugee family, and my grandfather, who has shared powerful stories of the discrimination Japanese Americans faced during and after World War II. I use the StoryCorps app to preserve these voices in the National Archives, and I'm working to partner with them to reach even more people. As Miss Auburn's Teen, and hopefully Miss Washington's Teen, I'm committed to continuing this work across our region and beyond, because when we choose to listen, when we open our hearts, and when we act on what we've heard, that's how we create real change. Thank you again for this incredible honor and for supporting my mission to build a more compassionate community, one story at a time. Mahalo.
Forty years. All right. Hannah, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
No, Your Honor, we do not.
Thank you. We will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issue, and the public can participate in person or submit written comments in advance. Are there any written comments this evening?
No, Your Honor, no written comments, and we do not have anyone online.
Thank you. All right. We will move to in-person public comment. Is there anyone that would like to provide public comment this evening? Please come forward, give your name, city of residence for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. There is a clock right here by Hannah that will show you the time counting down.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, members of the community. My name's Yuval Fleming. I live in Auburn. I've called Auburn home since 2016, and it's where I've decided to raise a family. I think in some ways, having not lived here my entire life, I appreciate the community more than people who may have lived here their whole life. It's a very welcoming community, very tolerant and diverse community, and I am proud that our council represents that diversity. And I think most of us on the council in this community want to live in an inclusive and diverse, tolerant community. I originally came to speak about some of my concerns about speeding along I Street and some of the unsafe conditions on some of our roads. I don't think traffic safety is taken seriously enough. It's likely 40 people will be killed or seriously injured on the streets of Auburn this year as they have been in previous years, and it's important that we don't become desensitized to that carnage. I think there's several things that we can do to make our city safer, including lowering the speed limits specifically on residential streets. But I wanted to do that advocacy on the Transportation Advisory Board, and one of the council members here recommended I apply for that board. I was quite surprised, and I've kind of had a range of emotions, to hear that that board's not accepting applications anymore. Apparently, in the wake of new federal regulations, it sounds like we're maybe not taking our commitment to diversity inclusion seriously anymore. It's good to have principles and morals and values, but you have to fight for them. If you don't fight for them, they just become performance. So apparently, I don't know if this decision was made unilaterally by the mayor or if this was discussed in council, but I don't know when the- there's currently several vacancies on the Transportation Advisory Board, and at the most recent meeting, they were barely able to hold a quorum. And I think- and so this is an important committee, and it's critical, provides critical oversight of one of the major departments and aspects of municipal government. So I'd really ask the mayor to reconsider opening up applications. I don't know what, if we're worried about the threat of a federal government, sounded like threat of losing transportation funding. I know it's city code, and I know in that code it does say, members of the board is intended to represent diverse community interests and backgrounds, and I think the board should do that, and I think applications to that board should be accepted so that people that care about this community can apply and join. And I would urge you to fight and make, do what's possible and do what's right so that we can have a community oversight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. We are in the process right now of reviewing the Transportation Advisory Board to see if it is meeting the needs of the community, as well as what do we do to ensure that our funding, which we rely on for safe roads in our city, to ensure that those grant funds are still available to us. So it's not that the Transportation Advisory Board is going away. We're going to look and see what it should look like. So it's on pause right now for accepting any new members, because it wouldn't be in anyone's best interest, and it would feel a little disingenuous if we brought in new members only to say we are changing the makeup or the look of the committee, and that's not the committee that you applied for. So that's why we have not brought in any new members to the Transportation Advisory Board at this time.
But could you just clarify, are these new federal regulations concerning diversity, equity, inclusion, is that why membership is paused?
So language is part of it, and this really isn't a dialogue back and forth. It's only supposed to be for public comment, but I just wanted to assure you that we are still looking at what this committee should look like.
Okay. Well, thank you for the time.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Final time, is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right. Thank you. We will move on to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Hannah?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. Council ad hoc committees, council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council, if any. We currently have one ad hoc committee, that's Council Rules of Procedure chaired by Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to provide the update that we've gotten through our first draft, and that will be coming out in the packet for next week's study session, to the best of my knowledge. So unless agendas change, you should have a chance to see it. And again, just a reminder ahead of that next meeting is when we have that meeting, we will walk through all of the changes that were made and have an opportunity to hear other feedback if you have new things to provide or submit, and we will iterate from there. So we'll go through the work as often, as much as we need. But hopefully you like this first path, and we'll get her done. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin, it may change to a future meeting since not all council members are going to be in attendance next week. So, all right. We will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I second that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes.
The consent agenda includes minutes from May 1st and May 2nd, special council meetings, minutes from May 5th, regular council meeting, minutes from May 12th, study session, and claims and vouchers as listed.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments or any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Moving to ordinances, ordinance number 6974, an ordinance granting to Level 3 Communications LLC a franchise for fiber optic telecommunications. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 6974, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance will allow Level 3 Communications LLC to continue to operate their existing fiber optic telecommunications facility located at the Public Way. And Level 3 currently provides telecommunications services, including but not limited to, telecommunication capacity, dark fiber transmission of voice, data, or other electronic information, or other high-capacity fiber optic transmission services to firms, businesses, and institutions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6974, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance number 6974 passes. Ordinance number 6975, an ordinance amending the city's 2025-2026 biennial budget. Is there a motion? Councilmember Baldwin.
I would move to approve ordinance number 6975.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
I second.
Thank you. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yep. Ordinance number 6975 is the first amendment to the Auburn City, or pardon me, to the City of Auburn's 2025-2026 biennial budget, and this will authorize a true-up of the 2025 budgeted beginning balances to 2024 actual ending balances. It'll carry forward budget authority for items that were under contract in the previous year, and it will recognize any new grant revenues and expenditures, and provide a few limited requests for new budget authority. All had been presented in last week's study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance number 6975, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance number 6975 passes.
First, I want to say that I attended Pet Palooza yesterday, and even though it turned, it was really, really rainy in the morning, but the weather turned really nice, and it was a great time, great crowd. I got to judge the little dog contest, so that was a lot of fun. And then we had a municipal service meeting with Councilmember Sturgis, and a couple things that came from that. We will be getting the report on Project Be Free, and that will come to council on June 9. We also found out that the city has been awarded the Cascade Bicycle Grant for the second year, so staff will bring a resolution to council in mid to late June to authorize the mayor to sign the grant, contact, and approve the LTE position supported by the grant. This will be their second year getting the grant. And then also, under the Court Services, staff reviewed the 2024 reconciliation and discussed questions related to Judge Robertson's letter to council.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. No more questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things, one of which is I attended the Green River College Hanford Award meeting as I sit on the committee for selection. We have picked a candidate, they have been notified, and we are looking forward to the celebration coming very soon. Also, I attended the Valley Regional Fire Authority Board of Governance where we discussed some items, especially when it comes to vehicles for our fire department. And then lastly, I attended, along with Councilmember Baldwin, our special focus area in our Public Works Second Economic Community Development Committee, a couple of infrastructure projects. We also discussed a couple of LTAC applications, or at least looking forward to that for the next quarter, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sturgis.
Yes, last week, I attended the Rotary Meeting on last Monday and had a really amazing presentation done by MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving. They've expanded, for the first time in a while, their branding to move from drunk driving to impaired driving so that they can have a broader focus, especially with text driving being a huge challenge. And so it was really informative. She specifically spoke to the work happening here in Auburn to make our streets safe, and the speeding and the speed limits was a huge focus of that, but it was a great presentation, so I was excited to be able to be part of that and learn more information. Also, I attended the King County Children Youth Advisory Board meeting last week on Tuesday, the 13th. Currently, they have oversight, or our advisory board is responsible for oversight of the Best Starts for Kids levy funding, and currently they have an RFP that is in review and closed for grant funding for youth development grants. They have 299 applicants, and we held several meetings last week to review all the applications and narrow it down, and we'll be looking forward to choosing some final applications over these next two weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Amare.
In May 6 to 9, I attended, as a board member for law enforcement, law enforcement officer and firefighter, law board member, I attend the conference, which was two, I think, two days back with information, presentation cover retirement system, legislative change, and senior wellness topic, and we get good information from the retirement system. So it was interesting. Besides, I attend the Valley Regional Fire Authority meeting. I made it. Yeah, I have another event, but I'll let the mayor cover the master builder.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So I have been working on the rules and procedures, as you heard our recent update. Also, the Public Works in Community Development Special Focus Area is noted by Councilmember Taylor and had attended the back half of the Master Builders event as well. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. On Tuesday, December, my goodness, let's have a summer first. May 6, I attended the kickoff meeting for the Security Emphasis Site Coordination Subcommittee of the Transit Public Safety Task Force that I mentioned a few weeks ago that I had attended. I was assigned to the Security Emphasis Site Coordination. There will be numerous meetings coming up with members of that committee to identify the best areas to help with, obviously, site security and how to ensure that transit riders, operators, and others involved with transit can know that they are safe when they get onto transit and when they get off of transit. So looking forward to the work that's going to be done in that committee. That evening, attended the Business Connect Event at Smoke &amp; Cedar at the Muckleshoot Casino and Resort. Beautiful, the mountain was out that evening, and to be up on the 19th floor, you could see far and wide, and it's really fun to see the City of Auburn from that perspective. So kudos to the chamber for hosting that event. On Wednesday, the 7th, King County Councilmember Pete Von Reichbauer, as he does typically, is very generous with this community, and he had two donations that day. The first one for the Auburn Noon Lions, over 800 pairs of used glasses. As you may know, the Lions Club, one of their focuses is on site, and so the opportunity to have 800 pairs of glasses donated to them, they will go to good use in this community and beyond. And then immediately after that, Councilmember Von Reichbauer had a $5,000 check for Lon and Alan Lan. Now I'm going to forget the last name all of a sudden, but had a $5,000 check for them for the benefit of the Vietnam Memorial that is over at Leskoev Park. And so really just heartwarming to see Alan and Lon accepting that award and the good that they will be able to do with that. They have recently installed some beautiful marble benches, and this will go to complete the memorial. And on Thursday, May 8, actually, all of the week was Public Employees Appreciation Week, and so our city employees had fun days, there was a Hawaiian Day, but Thursday was Ice Cream Day. And so my office purchased ice cream at Los Cencos for employees to go over throughout the day. All they had to do was show their badge and get a free scoop of ice cream. Yes. You missed that, Councilmember Taylor? You missed it. Next year, all you got to do is show your badge. But always a fun event, and I want to say thank you to all of our employees as they do an amazing job every day, many of them behind the scenes, many of them you don't know, you will probably never see, but they do a lot of things to make sure that all of your expectations for the city are in line, that you can turn your sink on and the water is going to run, that you can drive on our roads, that sewage is going to go where sewage should go, and the accounting is going to be done, the city clerk's office is going to do their best to serve the community. Every department plays a role in ensuring that the city is ran very well, and I say thank you to all of our employees for a job well done. On Tuesday, the 13th, I attended a celebration for Councilmember Von Reichbauer in Seattle, celebrating over 30 years on the King County Council. And he served about 20 years in the state legislature, so he has certainly been an amazing public servant. We appreciate his support in the City of Auburn, and somebody said, here's to 30 more years, and he kind of looked at them and rolled his eyes. I don't think he's interested in that, but here's to a few more anyway. And then Friday, attended Coffee Hour at the Senior Center, always a great time. The seniors really keep us on our toes. They had great questions, and it was standing room only in the room, so it was really great to connect with them. And on Saturday, a very busy day, started out in Kent at Showware with calls a day and the sick community. Always a great time, their festival is wonderful as they celebrate, and then left there to get to Pet Palooza to judge the pet contests, the pet tricks, and Pet Looking Like Your Owner, and all of the other great judging that we get to do, the tiniest pets. The tiniest dog has won three years in a row. His name is Oreo, so congratulations, Oreo. And then when I left Pet Palooza, went to Don Stevenson Memorial Services. Some of you may not recognize his name, but you may recognize his nickname, which was the Pacing Parsons. Don walked thousands of miles all over this country to support different causes, and he passed away in February, and it was a wonderful tribute to a man who has done so much for not just our community but throughout this country. His wife, Loretta, said they made friends in just about every state as they were doing their walks, and I want to thank Don. Several times when he would finish a walk, we would celebrate, we would have a ceremony for him out on the plaza, and he always did this with a smile on his face, and I know love in his heart. He was a man of God and really enjoyed the work that he was doing. So I want to give my best to the Stevenson family, eight children, 48 grandchildren, 97, I believe, great-grandchildren, and four great-great-grandchildren. So it was a day of different events, all of them very important. All right, I don't believe we have any reason for a closed or executive session this evening. We are adjourned.